Yeah.
Just drive.
Yeah, sure.
The service.
From the service.
Oh.
Um. If they know the monster happened. Or whatever. You know, it's gonna be a concern. He's like, why don't you have my list? Because it's not me.
Right, right.
So I gave him this thing going email.
Yep, I don't see anything. So I'll check the. Yeah. There.
Or maybe check your messages on Facebook. Sometimes.
Yep.
I'll watch for it now.
Just waiting for the tick of the clock there.
All right, it's 5:30. I will call this work session to order. Um, because we've got some guests. Why don't we start with introductions? Good evening, welcome. My name is Courtney Johnson, the mayor.
Hi, I'm Kayla Pascoe, City Councilwoman.
I'm Shuti, Finance Director.
Brenda Good, Admin Services Coordinator.
Erin Schmidt, City Engineer.
Brent Rock, City Manager.
Eric Perschmann, City Council. Who often forgets to charge his iPad.
Dalton O'Hara, Project Manager with Terra Construction.
I'm Tom Brown with Terra Construction.
Andrew Simmons, Public Services Director.
And Andrew Cooper with Ortel Architects. Simmons and Cooper, that's how we're gonna have to like.
And I'm Kristi Mock, I'm a City Council Member. All right.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, really no action for the council. We're gonna ask you to consider some design development. Kind of, I would say contracts and process at your next meeting. But tonight is designed to be kind of a collective kind of education, learning, question asking, exercise. About what is design development? It's been over five years or so since the city embarked on the City Hall process and involved architects and construction management. And so kind of in the spirit of kind of that renewing that process, we wanted to get you comfortable with the people and the process that goes along with what I'll call kind of a generational type of infrastructure building project that you're considering. And so you probably remember Andrew from our space study on the public services project. Terra Construction, Tom and Dalton are some new faces. Andrew Simmons and I, we can't get the Simmons and Cooper thing down yet. Interviewed some candidates for construction management services and were frankly overwhelmed with the positivity and kind of the know-how that Tom and Dalton brought to the table. I think they're gonna lend a personal touch that's needed in a community like Carver as opposed to just being one of, you know, 100 other projects. They really did their research on what our process has been to date. And I think will really understand kind of the advocacy pieces that go along with being a construction manager. But want to let them speak to their service as well as Andrew Cooper on next steps as it relates to architecture and kind of how those two services intermingle with each other so that the council can get an understanding of that, emphasize maybe certain criteria that you have within your guiding principles for this next phase. And being real intentional about that this is just a next phase, that the council and the community haven't said, we're building this building or we're building this building and you're X. That this is a process to get us to a point where we can have robust community engagement and figure out how we want to proceed. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ortel and Terra.
Wow, well, thanks, Brent. Evening, Mayor and Council. So what we did put together for you, what Dalton put together specifically is kind of a graphic, simple schedule of what the process would look like. And real quick to define what design development is, it's gonna be about 60% of a total design completion. So we're going through rehashing the space needs and kind of reconfirming some things. Confirming a concept where now we have a site and it's not just kind of a mythical site, it's something that we actually have geometry and access points. We're gonna rediscover that and then we're gonna go all the way to designing wall sections. Maybe not necessarily what is the exact material on the outside and how everything from the outside surface to the inside surface really works. But enough so that the estimate that gets put together at the end of this DD, blue arrow at the bottom, is something like, yeah, that's how much the project costs. And through that point to the point when we start, there's multiple opportunities to come back to you, show you what we've been developing with staff, Andrew's staff. Remember, we're leaving Brent out of this, he's not working at the facility, it's gonna be Andrew and his staff. What really what they're telling us really needs to happen and what they need to have in the facility, come back to you, demonstrate that. You guys ask us questions, challenge us on decisions that have been made so that when we get to the end of this DD phase, we have something that's really solid, exactly what the city of Carver needs for their project. And then robust community engagement, information, tell the community what they're getting, what is necessary, how much it's gonna cost. Timeline may not be completely ironed up yet, but you get that kind of process before you go on to being ready to release for bid documents. So really quick, start at the onset of what this project is going to be. I mentioned the rediscovery. We made some high level assumptions in the space needs study about community growth and total space demand. And some of that, now that Andrew has come on board with the city, needs to be challenged and needs to be fleshed out in a little more detail so we're not dealing with great big boxes. We can shrink it down and start to see where actual space needs to be allocated, where things need to accommodate for growth now or be planned for in the future. We're gonna do that on the onset. Part of the, what we like to do at the onset of this kind of real design project is tour facilities. We've seen a bunch with previous clients, Andrew has seen some, but maybe you guys haven't seen any. And so to come together and take a tour of three to maybe four facilities to see what those communities heard from staff, how they addressed their issues, their needs, their budgets, and then lessons learned. Lesson learns are the, they are the biggest thing you'll see on those tours. Some tours are gonna have lessons on budget handling, lessons on space, some are gonna have lessons on how to deal with construction issues or post occupancy issues. All that stuff is valuable to help inform what is actually needed for the facility. And then we start super high level design and we start to get cycled into what the real details are. We start to, sorry about that. We start to cycle into what is, what is an office look like? It's not just a rectangle, it might have specific geometry that needs to have, it might have specific furniture needs. We're gonna really start drilling into that. That probably happens more in this kind of November, December timeframe where we're starting to get into a real building plan on all functions, not just kind of the large vehicle functions. We'll go through that, we'll have elevations and renderings, a picture of what the facility would look like on that piece of property, so how it sits, what the sighting is like, what the grading is like. I'm gonna speak for, the engineering on the site will be robust enough to like really tell a good story on what is happening on that property, but also dealing with other authorities like the county, it's a county road and what that looks like, how to get out to the site, what utilities looks like, how to get out to the site. That will all come together for this February key touch point. It's what the box looks like and it's what the first book at the budget is. And that's the first step in kind of right sizing things and what is a real design project. There'll be general form, there'll be some material and color palettes to comment on, but nothing concrete that we're not at a point where it can't be, you know, did you think of this? Can you, can you do this? Or let's not do that. That was all completely flexible throughout this entire process and that's the beauty of going up to design development. Once you get past design development and you move into construction documents, the architects and the engineers were so far along that it's really tough to change things. That's at the point where you progress into construction documents, you're pot committed at that point to, to building what shows up in the drawings at the end. So this whole process is meant to really kind of give you a solid design, but not something that can't be adjusted, whether it's future phasing, getting bigger, getting smaller, changing shape. All those things are completely on the table throughout this entire process.
Do you mind if I enter? So the beauty of having a contractor alongside of you during this process is to help inform just beyond, beyond just the design. It's important to know what those things cost, how they impact schedule and what your overall budget is, you know, along the way so that you can make good decisions, not just based on what you like or what, say, Andrew wants, right? But more importantly about, you know, how it really impacts the overall project itself. And certainly during this time of our lives, you know, so many things are impacting either materials or labor. And so if we can manage that well along with Ortel along the way, you're gonna get to June and you're gonna have a good budget that you know and are confident about that you can present to everybody in this community and tell them this is what it's gonna cost, it's not gonna exceed this. And so it's, it's helpful to have that along the way and be able to test those kind of conditions. And it gives you a lot of flexibility too in the middle of this, while Dalton has identified kind of these places for our budget checking. If one of you asks a question, hey, have you thought about an element, could you consider this? It's something that we can pull out and price individually as well. So it's not just the end all, this is the only time you're gonna see us, this is the only time you're gonna see us, that's not true. We're gonna be at as many design meetings as Mr. Cooper here lets us attend.
Three of them. No, I think that's important, that's an important, that's an important part to touch on, Tom, is that we're not working in two separate silos, that we are working together on the same project. That I'm not gonna run every design thing by a contractor to see what the cost implication are, but there's gonna be some things that'll be like, you know what, I've got okay cost information for something like this, but this is why Terra is here, is to help, help us choose building systems, choose mechanical systems and finishes and approaches and like, can we use this? Is it even gettable to build or are we gonna have to wait? We better, we better get it now in April of 2026 if we wanna build it in 2028 type of scenario. So that kind of dialogue will happen throughout the process and you will also get a chance to ask them, you know, us questions about things like that during the process too. It's even though there's these four distinct kind of phases, there's multiple touch points available. As often as you wanna see us within, you probably don't wanna see us once, once a week or twice a month even, but maybe, you know, maybe once within each of these key arrow durations are when you need to have those, those touch points. And we've budgeted that in terms of time within the schedule to be able to have those touch points with you and making sure that we're tracking to where you guys think that's necessary.
So any opportunity for one, to the council to ask specific questions about any of like the field, so there's, you know, three main planes, the civil engineering, architecture, construction management. If there's any questions about roles and responsibilities. And then two, they don't, you don't have to like give them the number, but if there's any piece within those six guiding principles of design development that you'd like to emphasize or say in your own words, the more information that you can give us on what you expect for outcomes, the closer that we can land the plane to that, to that area. And that'll be helpful and, you know, adding on to that site tour visit, we're gonna be bringing the public services staff along in the hopes that there'll be some conversation that'll happen organically within the group so that you can share your perspectives with Andrew's team and vice versa. And I think there, we kind of learn and grow together, there becomes a common understanding. So kind of the first step is making sure that we understand as kind of the leaders in the community, what are those principles or what maybe that's not listed, do you wanna emphasize to the kind of leadership team of this design development process?
I have one question. When we come to the end here, we're in June, the very end, so it says Terra Budget Presentation. Is this going to include, again, not specific items, but any kind of the furniture, anything, everything that goes in the building too?
Total, total project, total project budget.
Also.
Yeah, the one thing it probably wouldn't have at that juncture is the CDs, the CD cost and fees. My daughter has called me three times, so.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
That's code for me too.
Well, we'll get that baseline number and then if there are additional like soft costs that we need to add to get us to 100%, we would go through that process before we went out to the public and said, okay, this is the budget for the entire project.
Okay. And then one other thing we had talked about is the possibility, because we're gonna have so much rough space, of having like solar panels, the option of solar panels, will we see that as an option in there? Or as the.
Six.
Right. But will, is that gonna be included right away? Or will it be kind of a pull off option?
That's a, that's a great point because one of my questions was for softball questions, if you guys didn't have anything, was what does sustainability or sustainable design mean to you? So, yeah, solar is something that our structural engineers that we work with have an immediate direction from us to make sure that the roof can immediately handle solar panels. At that point, it's a pathway. It's simply just a way to get the power from the solar panels to whatever. And then working with your utility on what that means. No, you can't drive with a flat tire.
You can, that's not driving.
If you need to cough, we can totally. Put her on speaker.
She would love that, that sixteen year old girl.
Just a little bit of history for Cooper.
Seriously.
For Tom and Dalton is when we renovated the fire station public services building about a year and a half ago, the council was interested in solar. But there's maybe some missed opportunities with the architect at the time, different firm. And then there was some additional add-on costs because they didn't know if the structure of the building could take on the solar, the weight of the solar panels, et cetera. So I think that, so right, we're interested in getting that full package, you're talking, well, if you wanna look at it, it's gonna cost you X mortgage to do a study. Dalton, you can talk about it, but we just completed some work for a private college where we installed a great deal of solar as well as a number of the facilities were PV ready. Exactly, yeah.
What was the ROI on that project?
It's a, that's a question I can't answer. It relates to, it's just, it's a big question, just because of all the costs and in addition to the other sustainable elements of the project.
Any, can you speak in any generalities since in projects that have been in your scope in the last couple of years? Is it 10 years, is it 15? What do you typically?
ROI on solar panels?
ROI on solar panels, what do you think?
We've been installing solar panels on the bulk of our state projects because they're mandated when they're funded by the state to meet Minnesota B3 guidelines. And payback has, I don't know if that's a question, I'm just gonna start from the whole thing. Payback has gone from 20 years down to like three and five years, depending on total sizes. Really have to work with your utility on what the maximum size, you guys miss sort of value here? So it's 40 KW is the max and you go 40.1 and they're gonna start charging you different rates unless you go completely off them by 100% solar on your building.
So they disincentivize you at 41?
They, you're correct.
Okay.
Correct. Grants, your grant paperwork had to be in last month in order to get it for there, for solar grants. And that's a grant that's ending, but it's, it really just covers a very small amount of install. The panels have gotten so much better over the last decade that the bulk of your infrastructure costs is in conduit and rough structure and not necessarily the actual panel and the structure for holding the panels on the roof. Battery storage is a thing that costs still as much as you wanna spend on it if you wanna store energy. And then integrating into the utility is a cost that's pretty much a wild card and it's really hard to kind of forecast that until you have a design. They don't really wanna, no one wants to talk to you about your solar design until it's a solar design. So they probably wouldn't even touch base with us on this schedule. They'll give us some generalities like, eh, the 40 KW, okay, yeah, you're good, we'll talk about it once you come for a permit. If we decided to put, let's say it's a 50,000 square foot vehicle storage box and we cover that with panels, so that's gonna power the entire building, then they'll come to the table and somewhere, somewhere in this schedule, if that's the plan. But you have to look at like how much that infrastructure costs versus and what your goals are as a community too.
So let's say we got to the end here and we just decided that solar panels, we're just not interested. Would we go back then and redesign the roof because we wouldn't need as much because we wouldn't be holding them any of that?
It's not, it's not, it's not such a savings on the structure that you would want to do that and hamstring yourself for the future if it became something that was more economically viable or became a future goal. The new building code that will come out right about here, I don't know what the new loads are gonna be structurally sounding, so it might be that you're gonna be designing the roof to accommodate whether it's, you're going to do it or not, because that's one of the things that is coming out of the building code. They want you to structure all roofs for an increased dead load and live load like it would be solar panels.
Okay, I'm just thinking if the cost is so great of getting these solar panels on and getting all of the things that we need to take care of to get it done and it just becomes too high of a price for us at some point, if it was a large amount of money we would be saving to then restructure the roof to not hold it, again, I don't wanna, we don't wanna cut our noses by our face, but just something I was thinking about.
Yeah, the, that whole discussion on energy usage and energy type is really gonna come down to a, a gas versus electricity future perspective, you know, we don't generate our own gas in the state of Minnesota, we pipe it from elsewhere. And so we have remarkably cheap gas, but not everywhere in the country has that and at some point, you don't know, we don't know when, that might not become as viable. So you wanna leave your options open for something, if you're designing it to 20, 30 years, you wanna have that flexibility. The rough structure is the easiest thing when you're gonna accommodate.
Okay, thank you.
So site business, facility business, I think those will be really beneficial for us, but it really needs to be beneficial for you. The question there is, what about your counterparts maybe in some other cities that have done this? Can we engage them in our design and development just as a, someone who's built a house before and made a mistake and wishes they had done something differently? It's one thing for us to go and see what has been done, but as we're developing our own building, maybe it's useful that we engage with our, with some other cities and your peers.
Yeah, I think those conversations will definitely happen as we go through this process where things get suggested of layout or storage options or how things are gonna work. It's gonna be like, okay, let's find someone else that has this type of setup, but let's call them, see if it works. Or I know a big issue for me just is floor drains, what those floor drains look like because I've had a nightmare in my past where the floor drains all rush jacked and all the concrete, it was gonna have to be ripped out in a couple of years. So there's a lot of little design elements like that that are already in my thought, thought process and we'll work those out.
Well, and I'm also worried about nightmares you didn't have. You did somebody else didn't have. And we'll look at what we're doing and say, hey, Andrew, have you considered this? In the design. Because again, we'll do these site visits and that'll give us some direction and we'll have an idea of what we're gonna be spending the money on. But as big a project as this is, as much help Andrew as you've got. In, in other cities, helping us weigh in on the scope of the building.
The one thing you'll find during the tours is that the people who will be giving us the tours from these are not shy. Everything that went wrong as well as went right. So from multiple points in the process too, so.
Anything else?
No, that's it. I'm surprised that three to five years is, is the return.
Yeah, you get, you get to a certain size where, and that's, I think that's where the 40 KW kind of flushes out, that's kind of the maximum size where you're, you're kind of at that mythical break even, you know, it's not, it's obviously not break even, but it's, you go bigger and you're gonna spend an exceptional amount of money on other infrastructure and batteries. And that's where it starts to spool up and cause some payback. But little systems have this same effect. I'll just do a little 10 KW demonstration. You paid as much of a 10 KW as you did for 40 KW, so.
One more real quick, that's the lifespan on solar panels, do you have any idea?
The, I don't know 100%. The ones that we last installed were 96 cell in their 20 year panels, but technology, like literally they were installed. And it was the third version of panels we got during the course of the project, shop drawing wise, because the technology kept on. We went from 64 to 72 to 88 to 96 cell panels at the time before they got installed. I don't have no idea what cell they're on right now. I have a sustainable design coordinator in the office who probably, she probably knows and she'll tell me later, but I know it's 96 cell is probably about 15 to 20 years on the, the cell technology itself.
Okay. Kayla? That answered my questions, but thank you. I think in terms of like hearing the guiding principles in our own words, for me, it is, you know, this is the public services department, this is gonna be their home base, I will not work from there one day in my life. So I wanna make sure that it's something that you and the staff is super comfortable with and is exactly what you want. I also think it's really important that this is, that we keep in mind, and we all know this, but again, hearing it in my own words, this is taxpayer funded and being really the best stewards of the taxpayer money that we can for this, while also recognizing that this is a generational project and we want it to last for a couple generations if not longer. And have it be something that looks decent as you're driving past it. So I think that's where I'm thinking of. For me, the efficiency and sustain, efficiency is very much a, a need for me, sustainability would be nice to have. And I think, Andrew, you kind of just went through like how quickly things are changing. I am not an expert in this area, I don't know what's available beyond like solar and geothermal, but maybe there's a menu option of what we can do and kind of the corresponding cost for that. So I think that's where I'm thinking top tier. I also wanna see if we can engage as many folks in the public services staff as makes sense. In these tours, I think I don't wanna see more council than public services folks. Because I wanna, really want this to be a building for them that works. So that's it for me.
I think that, I'm glad you touched on that, Mary. It's one of the, the other softball question I had was, what does value mean for you? So a generational project. what does value mean for you? So a generational project and I know I remember if it was here, you know, a lot of finance directors then want the project to last beyond the bond. So, you know, we talked about, I think we did this here where we talked about a twenty year forecast being kind of the minimum because if you're a bond for twenty five or thirty, like why would you plan for something less than that? You just got to come back in ten years and build. So it's, you know, that, you talked about that and touched on that. So that's her value, what that is. I don't know if that, the rest of you comfortable, feels the same way on the.
Maybe just one more thing for me before, you know, like you're in our historic downtown, things here last for a really long time. I expect this to last, like not be irreplaceable. I don't, not only do I want it to last for the term of a bond, but I want it to last a whole lot longer than that lifetime. So if you guys, if differently you want to add?
I think that's all of our intent, that we want something that outlures us. Question of energy. Do any of your buildings have fuel depots? Do they do that where they'll have diesel or gasoline outside of the depot?
For the, for the fleets.
For the fleet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Andrew, is that something?
I mean, we have tanks at our site now.
Okay.
And we get it delivered. The big question will be above ground or underground.
Okay.
When do we get to that point?
So that is part of the scope of this project?
Yes. Fueling station.
We did forecast the fuel.
Yeah.
And that's a good point because it's not just the fuel in the building, but it's the facilities. So think of self-storage, material, outdoor material storage, fencing. So it's, it'll be building plus all the things that go along with a facility like that.
And good. Any more softballs for us?
I only had two.
Did you get what you need from us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. And, you know, I, we had the dialogue on the space needs too. And so some feedback from there and Brent and Andrew had some feedback too. So I'm just, we're really looking forward to digging into it again and kind of going back. And the tours will be super, super fun. Those are especially fun. I don't have to drive anywhere. We just get to ride on the Southwest bus, that'd be great. You know, and then, and you can, you can see those things and then it all comes together pretty quick in this early phase where you're starting to look at that. One thing, you know, the longevity and the generational project, regardless of what the building, the box looks like at the end of this D D phase, we want to make sure that you guys have a master plan, if it's a fifty year program, that there's a way for the building and the site to accommodate use beyond what we all think could happen in terms of space. I have no idea if we're going to have flying cars or whatever at some point in time, but we do know that there's going to be alternative fuels and there's going to be some alternative modes of transportation that we're going to have to deal with as a public works entity. And, you know, working with Andrew to figure out what those are for Carver. Making sure that that master plan is something that is implementable, even if it's just little slivers of building addition or site expansion and development, making sure that, that there's some longevity there.
Thank you.
You good?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good luck with that tire. Is she at home or is she straight?
She's, uh, she is just finished volleyball practice. She's in the parking lot.
Okay, so she's not on like
She's not on a
Shoulder one sixty nine or something, okay.
This is the, so you talked about Kayla, your, your car having it on noise. For the first two weeks, she got her driver's license and she was driving in first gear because it's one of those, it goes down and you can tap that one way or the other. It's really loud. My wife says you need to drive the car this long with it.
This might be the point where we want to tell you that we videotape our work sessions. Now she can let this moment in perpetuity.
We'll make sure that she gets the link.
Thank you guys.
Thanks everybody, appreciate it.
See you.
All right, we've got the draft ten year utilities infrastructure plan update up next. Mr. Simmons and Mr. Schmidt.
Could someone throw me a lifeline or something?
It doesn't, it has to be, yeah, well, I discovered that one before. I talked to you.
Eric.
I, Adam.
Yeah, Eric, Adam.
All right, we can shift gears from a fun new building to pipes in the ground.
That's where it gets exciting.
Which are also very fun, I think, and very important. So I think in your packet, you probably have, I think like two different types of this. I think there's more of a report style and then PowerPoint style. And as we grow and learn together, me and Aaron are going to flush this out better. Just, it's hard to display some of this information on these big projects in a way that's easy for us to explain and for you to understand, even for us to understand. But so our twenty twenty five infrastructure plan goals, you know, responsibly deliver infrastructure projects to better the city of Carver. Continue to develop infrastructure plans and understand where our future opportunities are going to occur. Where do they need to happen? Develop trigger points to guide our infrastructure timing. That's really important as some of the pipes that are already in the ground are a certain size, you know? Where are those limits of those pipes? When are they going to be full? When is the water treatment plant going to be at capacity? When do we need extra stuff? So we really want to understand those because these are not cheap projects. And then we want to continue getting better at our maintenance practices. So these things last literally as long as we possibly can get them to last. So that's, you know, probably not in the C I P, but that's more of on our day to day operations of flushing, cleaning lift stations, turning valves, making sure everything lasts as long as possible. So we don't have to come back here and ask for three million dollars for something that we didn't take care of. So our current water plan, this was on the previous year. All those good things. One thing that's obviously coming to the forefront of our life is the Southwest trunk extension. That's on the water side, sewer side, same kind of thing. Spring Creek Lift Station pumps got put in this year, so that was a great box to check. Carver Creek Lift Station, we had two pumps get replaced in the past week. And there's another item on the council agenda to get that second set done. So that project, because that's the biggest lift station in town, that literally takes everybody's waste and pumps it to Chaska. So every time you flush, it definitely goes right there. So we want to make sure that we're.
Just a little, I think you mentioned the cost of the beans related to tariffs that you kind of got a good line of sight on.
Yeah, we, we, it actually is probably a bit of luck that we ran into our pump dealer when we did. He was speaking to me and Jordan probably in early August. And he said, if there's any way you can get these pumps ordered by, you know, early September, we're going to be able to save thirty thousand dollars on these two pumps. So the pumps aren't made here, so they got to get here. So whatever happens, happens. But so that's a great opportunity and a great savings. Because we have a plan, we know what needs to be done. So when those opportunities come, we can jump on them. So here is kind of the, this is the proposed plan. If it's in yellow, the costs were updated. If they're in green, they are new projects added to the list. And if they're in red, they're being removed from the ten year plan. There's still projects that are going to need to occur in our city's history. But right now we're moving those out of it. So some big changes, you know, the green is really, we just want to do some studies for lift stations. Make sure that all our pumps, we have information on those pumps, panels, how long they're going to last, what kind they are, where to get them, that kind of information, what lift stations are close to capacity. We'll be able to understand that. I guess the big mover and shaker on this table is really the construction of wastewater, or not wastewater, the water treatment plant number two, which I think went from, what number was it at? Like ten or fifteen? Eighteen, and it's about up to twenty five now with the new cost estimates. But still a few years away, but we need to start planning for that and start understanding what it's going to be moving forward. So here's our, this is the sanitary system. So just kind of a overall look. This is the future twenty forty plan that was updated in the last comp plan. So kind of using this as a basis of throwing on some of these projects so you guys have a good idea of where they occur. Carver Creek Lift Station, one of the big projects that was actually taken out of the plan was the flow diversion and Ironwood Lift Station. So that would occur in here is to take all this sewer flow that's out west and have to bypass it into Chaska and actually bypass the Carver Creek Lift Station because there's a pipe in the Spring Creek neighborhood. That's kind of the choke point. So once the flows get too much, we can't shove anymore down there. We have to bypass it. So that was a big project. Big, big woods, future regional lift station will occur in this and serve this light tan box. Additional two twelve crossings. Cause I think the only pipe that goes on two twelve is what Aaron, it's like a
It's a ten inch.
It's a ten inch. So as we continue to develop north of two twelve, that will run out of capacity. And then we, down south, we got the Southwest utility extension and the public services utility extension, which hopefully will run in tandem. On the water side, you know, in the next year, we'll probably start looking at citing well seven, which will be the last well that can be plumbed to the water treatment plant. And then that the plant will be at capacity for as much water that it can take. Not necessarily we're at that point of the plant can't keep up with demand, but we want to stay ahead of that demand so we don't get caught in a bad spot. And then another thing would be looking at, you know, where is the second water treatment plant going to happen? Previously, there was a study on the, around two twelve that got done. I would like to explore the opportunities down south if it would make sense to put one down there. So we'd be looking at a kind of high-tech geologic study down there as well.
Is there any advantage to having it south for what?
Could be.
After pump?
Could be. You know, that's a part of the study that's going to flush that out. Connecting the north side to that, like the, where the south expansion is going to happen, there's only one pipe. So all that growth down there will only be served by one pipe, you know? Eventually it's going to be looped back up to two twelve, but that could be fifty, seventy five years before that gets done, right? So wanting to make sure that we're able to serve everybody responsibly, that if there is some sort of emergency.
I thought maybe with elevation, there was some advantage, but no.
We can always pump stuff, you know, that's what the water towers are for. And if we do another storage, maybe it's ground storage or pumps that can overcome some of the pressures. So it kind of went over the plan updates and highlights some updated costs to the public services infrastructure, Carver Creek Lift Station updates. And then the big thing is still wastewater treatment, or the water treatment plant.
The wastewater stuff, we're, we're in conversations with my council and we're doing that planning, correct? So that they are, they have on their horizon what we have on our horizon?
Yeah, that is always something with the twenty forty comp plan or where are we going to be at twenty fifty?
Twenty fifty.
Where we have to submit our plans to them. Our growth projections, well, they give us the growth projections, I guess, but they are, they work in step with us on that type of stuff. So they know that they have capacity. New projects, kind of mentioned a bunch of the studies. One of the possibly more fun projects is going to be the Riverside Park Bank Stabilization. It's kind of a project that we threw in the plan that if grant funding opportunities come available, we have it in our plan, which is required for a lot of the grant opportunities. So it's in our plan. We're planning for it. We want it to happen. So hopefully we can get a bunch of outside money to make those things happen. Just kind of playing the game a little bit. And then removed from the ten year plan, not removed from the city's overall plan is the Ironwood Forest Main and the Ironwood Park Lift Station, which those projects again, will need to occur at some point. So yeah, touching on the studies and model updates again. So I want to do lift station study just so we can get our maintenance practices down. Build the replacement schedules. Again, you'll get sick of hearing me saying, you need to start planning for replacement of things because they don't last forever. Even if it's going to last ten years, we want to know if it's going to last ten years or plan for that when it comes up. So we don't have any surprises. And we want to know, you know, what the capacity of each of those lift stations is. Water system study, just continue to investigate where that water treatment plant is going to sit. How our future growth is going to affect how much water we're going through. Cause that again is another one of those generational type projects that you don't want to miss on, right? So we want to spend the time and get that right. And then stormwater model update, just, you know, as we get ready for the twenty four, or twenty fifty comp plan, all these things are going to have to be updated anyway. So we're getting a, getting a head start and that thing will be dialed in and ready to go. So we don't have to monkey around with that. So another thing that's on the C I P is advanced metering infrastructure. I know Lynn is very excited about this type of project. So really what it is, is instead of driving by each house and collecting the meter data, you put an antenna on the water tower, it shoots out a single, says, hey, give me all your usage. And it shoots it back to the water tower, right to city hall. They throw the bills out and no one has to drive around down to meter or read the meters.
Is that our radio network or cellular?
It's our, well, I think we get a, we get a frequency.
We assign our own frequency.
You know, so af, if some of the meters don't talk to us, we'll still have to drive around. But you'll, you'll be able to get probably, you know, ninety five percent at least of the readings. And the really cool thing a lot of cities are leaning on is this gives the users a lot more information. It gives them a lot more like real time information of my toilets are leaking and I can see that I'm using a bunch of water at three A M. and no one's awake or whatever. So you don't get a surprise on your water bill, you know? We're monthly, right? So you, some communities are, you know, quarterly. And if you've got a running toilet for three months and you don't know because it's in the basement, it's a surprise and it hits you in the face real hard. So it's a, it's kind of the, the future of what water utilities are doing. Most of the meters that are in people's houses right now already are able for that technology. It just needs to be flipped on, right? But there will be some meters in the community that will have to be replaced. And it'd be, some of those meters are probably close to their, end of their life anyways, so they would have to be replaced. But that will be a fun project to get done. Maybe Aaron can speak to the Southwest utility stations since he's the expert on that one.
Yeah, so that one, we're, we're getting started on here. We've started some, I'll say like concept design plan. So we've got plan sheets set up, cut some profiles and start looking at the pipe depths and everything for that. This fall, we're going to get out there and get the, the topo survey done for that corridor. So we can really start getting all the details put together. But in essence, this is kind of just moving in tandem with that whole Southwest. But in essence, this is kinda just moving in tandem with that whole Southwest development effort. So right now, we're doing the A U A R for that project and, you know, getting some of those initial details figured out before we get too crazy with, you know, getting the plans advanced, you know, kind of ahead of what it would be. But things are gonna start moving here, full steam. You know, after we get that topo survey done, then we'll have all the background data and be able to start really laying things out, so. Yeah. Any questions on that?
I think I've asked this before and I think the answer is yes, but when we put that extension in, that will remove the grinder or whatever it is in that's been so problematic in that last year.
Yep.
The other cool thing about that project, me and Aaron started talking about, you know, some of these sewer crossings, these trunk lines that are gonna go in, that sewer line opens up a potential of thirteen hundred acres for development to be served by a gravity pipe. So, you know, the cost of that pipe is obviously high, but the amount of land that it can serve is a huge amount too, where we don't have these lift stations and have to buy pumps and all these things. So going through this effort is huge. So well seven proposed to start in 2027, you know, the preliminary work in siting and drilling and connection in 2028, and this will be pretty much the end of the current water treatment plant will be at capacity then, but that's as much water as that plant can produce.
Just one thing, Andrew, to supplement on this. You've seen all these charts before, I've used them in the past and, you know, we're, this is all growth projections, right? And how quickly is the city growing and when is it gonna be needed? So that, the bigger red circle there is, you know, Andrew and I are looking at this every year, is, are we following at the line, are we ahead of it, are we, are we actually a little flatter? So, you know, we'll be able to get dialed in on that, on that year, you know, maybe it's not needed until twenty-nine, but at this point, we're still looking like we're trending pretty close to that red line, so we're not gonna be too far off at this rate.
That's a good point, just because, you know, we can only make assumptions about the future. If we knew what the future was gonna hold, we wouldn't be working here. Right? We'd be- That's the truth, right? So, but it, it's, it's re-looking at this every year, making sure, did something change? Did development really take off? Do we have to move these faster? Or did development slow down? Did, you know, people's water habits change? I mean, hopefully, you know, the machinery and equipment that gets put in everybody's houses is more and more water efficient, and that's probably what's helped most cities out in the past forty years, is the washers and whatever is using less water. People's habits probably haven't necessarily changed. It's not from turning the faucet off while you're brushing your teeth, but probably the washing machine technology has completely changed. So same kinda trigger on, you know, treatment plan two of when that timing would occur and kinda checking back on that all the time. And then Highway 212, gravity sewer crossing, like Aaron mentioned before, there's only a ten inch that serves up there now. And then getting a deeper, bigger pipe through that corridor, you know, that opens up a huge four hundred acres of development up there. So knowing where that's gonna be, and if the opportunity comes, you know, somebody might make that happen too, so. Any questions or-
I just-
Comments, concerns?
Well, the thing is, this is kind of the last in a whole series of CIP presentations the team has given to you, and so all these ingredients, if you will, are gonna be dumped into that long-term financial plan that Lynn's working on with Northland, so Tammy and Omdow and Jess Green, she'll be out here in October. And so the collection of the impact of these projects will be shown out in projected tax rates, fees, et cetera. And we're gonna have some metrics for you to kinda look at as you're considering that. And then we'll have these copies, and if you say, well, I'm not comfortable with this tax rate or this water rate, then hopefully that we have enough information to say, okay, in order to get to where you want, we'd have to move these things back or move this from over here to over there. So this kind of framing up this process again for you since, you know, the first presentation we gave was on the staffing study back in, or not staffing study, but staffing plan in July, so we've gone through a solid two months' worth of these, so that's a lot of information to, to take in. So you'll be presented with a kind of the financial impact to that in the, in what a month or so.
No question. Aaron, you're always building it a percentage for Omdow, like cost increases, usually around five percent, I think, in your presentations.
Yeah, for planning, I usually try to use ten if we can, then we go, we go on down to five once you start developing the plans, but yeah.
So you swerved and we saved thirty thousand dollars on a couple of pumps, right? How much exposure do we have in anything, you know, the next year that's subject, could be subject to this kind of tariff? I know we can't track it for what a penalty will cost, but do we have any big expenses like that that are gonna exceed what you might be budgeting?
What do you have for twenty, I mean?
The meters could be-
Meters.
Honestly, cause I, I believe they make them in Canada.
I mean, the bigger pieces would be connected with projects that are probably more in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight range, so like the Southwest Infrastructure, when you're talking about pipes or building projects with steel. But I can't, I don't know if there's anything related to like pump-
It's, I-
It's a good thought.
It's, yeah, and that's another one of those like, wish we-
Well, it's out of our control. That was a, to know that, you know, just ducking saved us, or, you know, acting quickly saved us thirty grand, what else is, are we gonna be subject to? Because I mean, yes, you budget for inflation of things that, you know, you expect maybe two, three percent. I don't know how much a thirty thousand dollar addition of a pump was over what we rejected.
I mean, we could probably check into like, like the hot patch trailer and the pickup that we're looking at in twenty twenty six.
Yeah, there's some of those definitely on the equipment side of things too, that, they're gonna go up a lot. A lot of those are at least on state contracts where, you know, they have to be bid out and embedded through the state and stuff like that, so that makes that process a lot easier for us.
And some of it is, so I mean, as you might remember, the big plow truck that we, that you authorized like a year and a half ago, we still don't have, so, you know? Pipe is very volatile.
Yeah, the pipes-
Pipe is impossible to predict. The resin cost is all over the place, so.
I have a question about the MXU and the AMI. Didn't we, oh, I have a couple of questions, pardon. Didn't we do a bunch of MXU upgrades very recently? I thought I have seen something about doing our MXU readers or something.
The only thing I can remember, this might be like ten plus years ago, we switched from, what do we have now, Badger?
We have Census.
We switched from Badger to Census a while ago, that was a long time ago, but-
Okay.
Nothing rings a bell.
Switching meter types to something that was gonna be compatible with this.
So a couple of things about this AMI system. It seems a little bit of a want, maybe not so much of a need to me right now, so I think I need a little bit more information on why this is so important. One of the things I've questioned are, what other cities around us are using that? I mean, are there cities that are in our peer group that are doing this as well? Or is this something that, like you guys said, is kind of really in the want stage for us?
It's a good question on the peer group, I don't know that. I know at my house in Crystal, they just had to come into my house and switch out my MXU, so now they're reading from the tower. We did this process in Rogers because we were driving around, and I think the biggest thing really is when we have a utility staff of three operators and one of them's taking huge chunks out of their month to go read these meters, it's, it's almost like the dollar amount is outweighed by the amount of labor that we're losing from them just driving around.
So I thought that was the point of these MXUs, and that we could read them from the road, and I may be using the wrong term for whatever we're using.
No, you're, you're correct, but it still takes time to drive the city, you know?
And what side, like how big is Crystal, when you say that? I mean, Crystal's population is-
Twenty, twenty-ish probably.
Twenty, and then Rogers? I wouldn't have an idea.
Fourteen, fifteen.
Oh, that's how Rogers is, okay. Okay, another question I had on this one is when I'm looking at the plan update in the green, it has a four oh nine five for a cost, and when I'm looking, it says twenty-six to thirty-five, plan year twenty-six. I'm on page five. Sorry, thanks, I'm like, uh, I don't usually do this, no, I'm, I'm not good at the iPad stuff either, but now I'm looking at different documents on here. So, all right, so this is four oh nine five in the green, so it says a citywide AMI and the MXU upgrades were four nine five. When I look back up on the page above it in the spreadsheet, if I'm adding really quickly to the things that I'm seeing for the AMI system, the MXU, and where was the other one? I was looking at, it looked like four hundred and sixty thousand when I was doing some really quick adding here. So what are the ones that apply to that?
Be the one oh eight.
So we have two oh one is the AMI metering system. We have the citywide MXU, which is one ten. And then is the W T-
You have the MXU upgraded installed in here twice.
Yep.
Got it.
Cause it's split, cause the water utility will pay for a portion of it and the sewer utility will pay for a portion of it.
Okay.
Cause the sewer rates are dependent on the-
Okay, we have city, up at the top, there's a citywide MXU upgrade, one oh eight five. Then we have an AMI metering system, two oh one, and then we have citywide MXU upgrade and install one ten. So if, when I'm doing some quick math, that's more than four oh nine.
Four nineteen, I think.
What's the W T Insight Communication Upgrades? Does that have nothing to do with it?
That's, okay. I would offer like, that if it's, I wouldn't say that it's a want of like staff, it's a, we think it's something as a team that the council may want and the community may want, but I think it's fair to say, like, you certainly don't, it doesn't need to be done to provide the service. But if, you know, I would say it's a value judgment by the council, if you don't wanna invest in that, you know, we're not offering that it's a, a need to operate the system because there's many different ways that you could operate it. So I don't, I don't wanna, I'm not characterizing it as a want of staff, like, because that's something that we really focus hard on, is we're gonna, gonna give you something that we think would be nice to have. Are there benefits to that? Probably, but there's also cost to that, and so we're relying on the council to say whether or not that's something you wanna invest in. So this would be an example, if you don't wanna see it as a part of the analysis, we could certainly pull that out and say, okay, you know, we don't, we don't wanna see that, and if we like what we see, then we add it back in, but you have some options here.
So the four nine, I mean, four nineteen, if I can stand it, I mean, this, we have a lot of big things that are coming up and a lot of money that's gonna be going out. And, I mean, this is relying, this is almost a half a million dollars, right? So I just, it's easy, really easy to look on spreadsheets and say, oh yeah, this works and this looks great, how does that really impact when we're looking at these big chunks? Cause you can put a half a million dollars, a half billion dollars, pretty soon you're at a lot of money. And I don't disagree that this is, it's kinda slick, right? I mean, I, I mean, I like it, but when we're looking at all of these dollar amounts, half a million dollars isn't nothing.
Chrissy, I don't disagree with you that that's just like half a million dollars, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, this is a really significant investment. Maybe another perspective is that it, I don't know that it future proves us, but it's future forward, because when we're twenty thousand people, we're not gonna have somebody driving around for fourteen days metering. You know, and like, so at what point do we pull the trigger on this? Because if not now, then when? And I would argue that, you know, if not, whenever it's in, is it in for twenty twenty-seven?
Six.
Six. If not twenty twenty-six, then when in the next ten years? Because it's gonna have to be in this plan at some point. I would love to learn more about what the benefits are and how it lets folks know with leak detection. I know Waconia just did, and it might have been more of their billing software, but did some upgrades with their utility bills where you can see what you use not only this month, but last year at this time, so you can kind of compare and contrast and see if you need to yell at your significant others to take a shower, so what that looks like. But I think, you know, this rilling manuals, driving around four hundred and thirty hours manually, or annually, that's not gonna work when, as, as we continue to grow.
I don't, I mean, I, you won't get an argument from me that it would definitely be nice for folks to see more real-time usage, because we do get the angry phone calls. You guys get the angry phone calls, we get the angry emails, when, you know, when something's gone wrong and you don't know for a month. I don't know, I'll wait and see if anyone else has any kinds of things.
My other thing too is what's the rate of technology change in this area? Because if this is something that, I mean, I, I agree with Courtney that eventually we're going to need something that's more remote to be able to handle a larger population, but are we five years away from a major technology change where this all becomes obsolete? Or, do you know what I mean?
I know what you mean, yeah.
How long has this been out, do you know?
I feel like ten, fifteen years has been a major shift. Oh, there you go. They're probably on the forefront of it, and then cities kinda jumped on the bandwagon of a, you know, Corn Main who sells us our meters, they're really the ones that use the technology, say sell, sell us our meter readers, and they'd also sell us the antenna that goes on top of the water tower. You know, I would be, if I'm gonna be honest about it, it's like, it's like one of those things, if everybody's doing it, it's probably, you know, like, cause every city's making a huge investment in this area, so it's not like the city of Carver is gonna be the only city in the metro that has this technology, it's, you know, we're gonna be, and if it's next year or three years, whatever.
Mine is Victoria doing it, it's Chaska, are the people around us doing it?
I had an email last week that someone was asking about, you know, they must have just moved here and at their previous city, I don't know what it was, but they had it and they're like, do we have it? Cause I know, cause he saw his meter in his basement and he knows that that technology exists, but we don't have this AMI system, but, you know, we can do a peer city review.
I'd like to just see some information. Eric, you're a tech guy who does things with towers, what tells somebody?
I can tell you with certainty, this has existed since at least two thousand seven. So changes in technology, so the radio system, if it works for us, that's great, that's a much lower cost way of doing it. In areas where it, that doesn't work, it's cellular. The technology's improved a lot there, so now that meter has, the remote meters might have ten years on the battery, something ten years before somebody has to go out and touch it, it used to be every couple of years, but we're not talking about a cellular deployment here. So I don't think that's really relevant, unless you can augment it with cellular for the meters that can speak to the tower, that might be an option.
It'd be setting up like a repeater.
A repeater, yeah.
At a strategic location, and I think they did a, what do they call it, propagation study?
Yep.
And it would reach what?
Ninety-nine percent.
Ninety-nine percent of the community if you put an antenna on tower one.
So do we have any issues with our topography here? Because we have hills.
That's what the study, they, they did a simulation, essentially Corn Main did, said if you put an antenna-
For here, for Carver.
If you put an antenna on Tower 1, it would reach 99% of the meters. Now, I don't think that, I remember the conversation we had. Does it connect to the Southwest extension?
That's with all the new development and everything. I just want to speak to the technology part real quick. And also that I do have Dan lined up to come in for a work session if that interests any of you. Unless you want to just wipe this out. But I do have him teed up to come to a work session to talk about AMI. I've been talking to him for about a year and a half. But the technology part is, some of our meters, the technology is, to read them is actually going away. So the technology that we're using now will be phased out. So we will be forced to go to this at some point in the future. So I just wanted to say that. Did I hit you off? I'm sorry.
No, no, that's. So to Courtney's point, we are going to grow. We're going to have to go to this. I expect the cost reduction, labor to drive around every month to check. And then when you get a call saying, hey, this is wrong, you got to come out and look at it. You can do that remotely now and say, well, I've got a live look at your meter right now and I can see this. So all those things, I think, will end up paying a large part of that, 425,000. But what we can return to residents in real-time notifications. I would expect that we also have the ability to tie that into some future proactive notification. So those systems are capable of doing that. Those systems allow you to opt-in yourself and take a look at your current water usage. So having, having become involved with the city over my argument about. Now, is that possible, my leaking toilets ruining my bill up that much? That whole engagement is what.
That's what you started.
That was the genesis of my involvement with the city.
Some of you just think of it as a refund.
It's, so it's great that it'll modernize us. It's great that it'll reduce all that travel time and expense. But it's also great that it'll give our residents some real-time vision into what's going on, so.
So you can look like a day to day?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you, I mean, these are all great, I mean, talking and arguments towards it. I would like to release, have, if he could come in.
Absolutely.
Just to understand more about it.
Hundred percent.
He's answered the do that. We'll do that, we'll get the peer thing and then. We could maybe do some analysis, like if it's not today and I don't know when the answer is speaking of projecting. But when like Summerfield and the Ondley like really start to go. You're going to be on point where you'll want to really strongly consider implementing it. Because if you start installing the old meter, that's one more one, you're going to have to go back in later to install it. I don't know what.
Well, all the meters right now that are being installed have this technology available.
Oh, okay.
So we're, I have already started that process because that's the only meters that they sell you. So they sell you the meters that have this technology in them. So when you're ready, you flip the switch, those meters will start sending data to the tower. So, but there's a, there's a portion of the system right now that we have to re, we would have to replace those MXUs. So that's part of the.
The cost.
Cost.
Yeah.
Of modernizing those water meters that are already in the system to catch up to those.
Let's see if we could get them here before. But yeah, that'll be in Jess.
Absolutely.
And then will you also just recheck these numbers in here? Because if I was adding and getting a different number, will you just take a little peek through? Okay, before that, thank you.
Lynn's better at math.
Whatever, whatever.
All right, any other questions on the draft and your utilities infrastructure plan?
All right. I don't want to put any pressure on you, but should we start the budget?
Yeah. Let's talk about the 2026 general fund budget. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So I don't know that I need to pull anything up. So tonight we are just taking another look at the preliminary general fund budget. You'll have another opportunity to discuss the budget that I presented at last time's work session. So at the September 15th meeting, council will be adopting the general fund budget and levy. So that means that'll be the highest that it can be, if you remember. And right now we are at an 11.39% levy increase from 2025. And our tax rate increased less than 1% from last year. So what changed from last time? Law enforcement contract increased by $13,523. But we also booked a revenue, a miscellaneous revenue. Because we're expecting not all of our contract hours will be filled. And so revenue went up by that amount and then expense went up by that amount. So that's what changed since last time. So the levy remained the same as it did last time. And that was just because of the, the contract for the Carver County Sheriff. So the impact to the average valued home would be $135 annually. And that would come up to about $11.25 per month. Overall levy is at 5.4 million. And we're taking a different approach. I'm kind of going over this for Christie too because she wasn't here. But we're taking a different approach this year. We are putting a pause on a couple of debt service payments that have excess cash in them. And we are just shifting that to our equipment levy to use that for the public services development. The design development and then. Facility, oh, sorry, facilities development. And then we will ship that back next year. So we're taking advantage of some excess fund balances instead of getting that cash back at the end of those debt service payments. I think it's a good strategy. Our overall levy, you know, remains increasing very similar rate as it has in the past.
Things of all the outstanding items that's significant is we're waiting on health insurance renewal rates, which we typically get in October. We plan for.
15% increase on those.
So hopefully we overshot on that and we can deliver some good news later on this fall. But the, the consensus for Councilmember Maak is.
Conrad.
Yes.
Were you waiting for that?
No, actually I didn't do a notice. And they just kept, they just kept saying Maak, Maak. And I was like, oh, wait.
You would do share that.
Correct.
I did.
I know, it's a hard trade, I did it myself, too. Thanks.
He goes, my DRU. But.
But back to the budget.
Yeah, back to the budget. The council, well, I'll let the council provide the feedback. I don't want to, but there, there was no suggested changes from the last meeting. So we're re-presenting this just as another opportunity for the council to like let that first draft sink in. We'll take additional feedback from the council tonight. If there isn't any additional feedback, what you see here tonight would be presented as the preliminary levy on the 15th.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Southwest Prime, we budgeted 45 last year, right? So it's the same carryover. We are not going to hit that though this year, is that right?
Correct, we're not going to hit it. We're also anticipating a $1 per trip increase. Or even with that, looking at the rider trip numbers, we'd still be below that 45,000. So that gives us enough with some cushion just in case there's an uptick, you know.
But it's also a potential spot where we could say, we only used 25, take 20,000 out this year.
Uh, I don't, I mean. Yes, and, yes, and I don't know if it'll be 25 short, but we also have Carver Place opening.
True. Are we looking into the other? Yeah, are we looking into the other, like, one with the county that we talked about?
Transit Link.
We're having a meeting with the county and Southwest in, I guess like next week.
Okay.
But as far as like looking into would be council direction on like, do you, how do you want to proceed with that? I don't have direction to like bring them out or connect on a. So they provide service today. So I don't know if there's anything additional to do other than. I get, there isn't anything additional to do because you, you could call for a ride today and get, or call for, schedule a ride for tomorrow and get one.
And you said you are meeting with them though?
I'm, we're meeting with, so the county has some transit dollars that are kind of undefined. And so Lyndon Rajan, Dave Hemsey. Eric Hansen, the CEO from Southwest, along with Dana from Victoria. Shane from Wakonia and myself are going to meet just because Cheska and Shannon are already in the transit taxing districts. So they're kind of separate from that discussion, but we're trying to get an idea of what money the county has available. Would, is some of that money eligible to help fund Prime so that it doesn't have to be funded from a city level? There are also some other things at play that when we get Southwest out here to talk about their Prime service and Eric Hansen. Probably better add to share on because the, the Met Council has changed the way. At least from my perspective, how they're funding micro-transit or services like Southwest Prime. But again, I think back to maybe your original question. Like the council could certainly entertain modifying that budget or eliminating that budget. We just need that direction from the council.
I don't think we should yet because this is only certified in the preliminary, so I have no want to take it right now. I'm saying I think that's something for myself that I'm going to be keeping a big eye on, especially after I'd like to hear what your conversations are then, that happened with. Of the county and all the other cities.
One of the other things I think you had previously mentioned on the possible agenda with the county was using some of the. Extra money to extend the hours of Transit Link? Because that's like our, that's our biggest hiccup between Transit Link and Prime is the out, service hours.
There's kind of two buckets. There's that Prime bucket and then like Mayor Johnson made a request to Commissioner Fahey to see if Smart Link would extend. Weekend service hours, so I'll be following up on both of those.
Your answer is underutilized. So that was the consensus, that it's underutilized and probably important that we do a better job. Our own some education and we can put that in the newsletter, that this is another service available.
Okay.
And then one additional piece to that. The county in conjunction with Southwest Transit has hired StanTech to do a mobility study in the county. And so Councilmember Bershman, just being our Southwest representative, is going to strip on a steering committee related to that. And so I think, I don't know if they've reached out to you yet, but there'll be more to come on that.
So it sounds like a certain interrupt.
Almost done.
Transit Link has expanded their service hours starting, well, it will be, starting Saturday, September 6th. Carver County, the Met Council will expand Transit Link service to the weekends, the weekend services Saturdays and Sundays from 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m.
Awesome. That's great. More discussions later.
Mr. Fahey just made that happen.
Yeah, our name for calling him.
Okay. Let's see, I think we'll push everything else to the, are we good on that? I just wanted to make sure we gave the. Budget enough time, we're. Okay. Then we will do requests and managers report during the regular meeting and I get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, second, second. Time. Of course, same time, motion passes.